Okay, Finance Committee, what we're going to talk about today is just a little bit of, you know, the bond is projected at forty-five million and Jerry's going to take us through the detail of how we get there.
Okay, that's simple enough. As we've met over the months, we've been anywhere between forty to forty-two to forty-five million. So the way it breaks down now...
My brain a little bit wishy-washy lately too.
Forty-two to forty-five. Forty-two to forty-five, and the way that breaks down is, construction costs is twenty million, nine-one-one equipment is fifteen million, that includes radios for corrections and insurance, and then the final piece that gets to forty-five is the ten million dollars for corrections. Now, a month or so ago, Jeff and I estimated for corrections, seven million, and I told him that we would seek professional advice on what is really needed on corrections to help Dr. Foxall in the future. And we've done that, and we weren't far off. It's in more detail, but it's seven million, it's six million, eight, but then when you throw in contingency, design fees, profit...
Where's this on the sheet? Ten million for corrections?
Yeah, that's up from the seven, the last time we met, so in total, the bond would be forty-five million.
All right, so let me ask one question. Twenty million dollar construction cost, is that all at one-hundred-and-fifty-six in April?
Yes.
All right, and we're talking about sixty thousand feet, right?
Yes.
And I just want you all to know, I'm not very smart, but that means we're spending over three hundred dollars a square foot. I can build buildings for about half that. I'm just telling you what you're spending, and I may be totally off track in what I'm saying.
You're not. Let me mention to you that some will remember this, years ago, we had, when we were looking at the building in the first place, the Weisheim Company came out and went through the building, and that is exactly what they said, the better investment is building a new building, and you could do it for far less than remodeling the present structure. I really agree.
And I want to stay with you, Jerry, but maybe some of it's furniture or something else, but I'm just telling you all, that's a lot of money per square foot.
I'm sorry, do that equation for me again.
Well, if you're spending twenty million on sixty thousand feet, unless my, and I know that's suffering my brain, but that's over three hundred dollars a foot. If you want to, I could probably sell you some of Con Edgers, which I'm part of listed, for two hundred dollars a foot, if you want to put the campus down there. But, okay, and if you say, how do you come up with those numbers, you just write the deal and I'll be down there talking to them.
That's a meeting stopper, isn't it?
Well, I mean...
There's a rebuttal.
We are here just to talk about exactly that point, so I'm glad you brought it up. So how do we get to that number, Jerry?
Well, I know it's been a big concern about the square foot number, for the square footage that we're going to renovate. So if I were to tell you that we renovated, the renovation cost, thirteen million, eight-hundred-thousand, divided by eighty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety square feet, that would equate to a hundred-and-sixty-six dollars a square foot. Now, to get to that thirteen-eight, because it's just really confusing, because I think we're all in agreement about the geothermal. I think we're all in agreement that we have to do a parking lot, we have to do grading, we have to do lights, parking lot lights, we have to soil testing. Those are things you'd do anyway. If you did a grade on Slab, you'd have to do all kinds of additional costs, so you can take these square footages and go up or down, but along with that, and maybe Jeff can go through the special factors of the nine-one-one and some of the other energy efficiencies that we're doing, if you want to touch on that.
But let me just follow up on that real quick. So what you're saying is, it's not twenty million divided by fifty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one square feet, that's not the equation. That's the equation that gets you to three hundred dollars a square foot, but you're saying it's a much bigger footprint than the five-hundred, or the fifty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one square feet.
What, you're doing the whole building?
And the grounds.
With the grounds, the furniture, fixtures, geothermal, contingencies, AEBs, all that stuff is wrapped in that number.
Okay.
So if you pull all that out, you're at thirteen point eight million.
So...
So if you're looking at a square foot for a building, you'd be looking at thirteen-eight, not twenty million. You add on for a parking lot, you add on for emergency, geothermal, the high pitch, the LED lights, things like that.
What are we getting for this, who handed this out, you?
Yeah.
Okay, what are we getting for twenty million dollars? Construction costs, twenty million, does that, what does that include? Does that include geothermal, parking, grading, and lights, and soil testing, and the whole building and furniture?
Yeah.
Then how come you brought, how come now you're saying it's thirteen point eight, thirteen...
Well, you...
Thirteen point eight million, thirty-eight hundred thousand, thirteen million, eight-hundred-thousand. What's it, how'd you lose those six thousand plus?
Six million?
For six million dollars.
Well, because...
I mean, you're the one that presented both these figures, so what's the deal?
Right, well, I'm trying to, because it's been discussed a lot, I'm trying to separate the basics that you would put into a complex for improvements versus...
Jerry, wait a second. You just said thirteen million, eight-hundred thousand takes care of eighty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety square feet, it's the whole building and furniture, includes geothermal parking, grading, lights, and soil testing.
No, no, no.
Okay, so it does not include, what doesn't include?
The thirteen point eight does include geothermal parking...
The building renovation.
Well, then it is twenty million then, huh?
It's twenty, but...
It's twenty, you're backing out certain things that aren't typically in a facility when you base it off a square foot.
Okay, what's, what is the figure you're recommending, thirteen point eight, or whatever it is?
No, it's the twenty.
The twenty, and that gets us the whole package.
Right.
Okay.
But the parking, and I don't want to belabor this, we need to move on, but, and we need to have this another discussion, but parking is, a lot of parking's already there.
Not for the volume that we have.
Okay, I mean, we're not redoing, and what's the soil test, is that for the parking?
No, there's...
But that's minor, I mean, I can do the soil test, twenty thousand dollars, not money left over to put in the parking lot, I mean, we know it's pretty virginal, we're not given what the land, okay, let's move on.
Okay. I think this is good, because this is exactly what we need to have in terms of getting our own heads around what's what. So if we're just doing, you know, I guess, the basic vanilla box of the building itself, if I understand you correctly, that is thirteen point eight of the twenty, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That goes to the fifty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one square feet specifically. That's all fifty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one square feet, wiring, plumbing, drywall, everything, okay. And if you do that, it's two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and change a square foot. Does that sound right?
Depends how you work the number.
Okay, that's what, and this is important to get to, how we work that number, so that we're all on the same page. Because, you know, I think the PJ bringing some expertise here in terms of, I could build a new building for, what did you say?
Well, we can buy Con Edger, but probably somewhere around a hundred-and-sixty or less than two-hundred, I'd assume. There are buildings down there, we, I'm just, I think you can build a building for two-hundred hours a foot.
Okay, well, that's what we're in the ballpark when we're talking about the thirteen point eight for the vanilla box of the building. You're at two-hundred-and-thirty-four a square foot.
I thought it was a hundred-and-sixty-six.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
It's the one-sixty-six, if you put the geothermal, parking lot, et cetera, et cetera, it's going to bump it up. And we do have another sheet with a breakdown, construction costs, site work, land, do we have that? I don't know, do we have sheets of that?
We need to see it, pass it around, will you?
Sure. Building renovation is the thirteen-eight, support expenses...
Excuse me, will you pass it around?
Yes.
Well, I mean, do you have any copies?
Do they go make, do they make copies of it?
I don't have an idea, what are you doing here today?
Well, I didn't...
Guys, give us a break.
I tried to, never mind, tried to capture the photo.
So you can't talk about these figures with us not having a scene of what you're talking about. I'm still very confused about all these, the square footage stuff, and, you know, I'm sorry I'm upsetting you, but where are we? We got, you know, twenty million, does that, that does, that covers everything, the geothermal parking, grading, the lights, the soil testing, the whole building and furniture, right?
Correct.
Yes.
For all the departments.
For all the departments.
Okay, let me ask you one more thing.
Am I right?
Let me ask you a question, because I think we're in deep cock-up on this bond issue. Separate out the cost of nine-one-one and radios, really public safety, clear public safety issues, what is the cost of redoing nine-one-one and radios? What does that cost? Is that here?
Well, I can tell you, okay, so I can, I can tell you that the fifteen million dollars is for the equipment. Now, that was based on the fire grant being two million dollars, the city getting two million dollars fire grant, they got apparently one point two million, so they're eight-hundred-thousand dollars short for the fire radios. So we, you know, if we kind of were once today, need to add eight-hundred thousand dollars to that number, so it'd be fifteen point eight million.
They told you that?
Yes, Marty told me that this morning.
Okay, so it's fifteen point eight million for nine-one-one equipment, and what about the facility? Anybody have a number on that?
Move the nine-one-one over to the fifth zone?
I guess so, yeah, yeah, I guess so, yeah.
A lot of the costs, a lot of the costs that you're talking about, like the geothermal and the, and the...
Infrastructure.
The generators and the backup generators and all that stuff, is included in the twenty million dollar cost that, that, so that, yeah, those building costs have not been isolated, you know, the fifteen, fifteen million dollars is just equipment and whatever, but if we move over there, we still have to address all the issues that were going to be addressed in construction, so I don't know how you break that.
If you break, if you took out the rest of the entities other than nine-one-one, you're prob, you're, you're less than a million dollar savings, because you got to build the infrastructure for the facility. Or you can piecemeal it and spend a lot more money down the road. And that's what I think everyone has been saying, is once we do this project, we got to build an infrastructure to carry existing people that's going in there and also future. And that's why we're building out the expansion space, too.
Okay, so it would be an amendment, nineteen, nineteen million?
Yeah.
So, we'll put nineteen million in there. So, the concern that I have is that we're going to face a real opposition from the city and lack of support, and I think we're going to get beat up badly if we have plumbing and if we have moving the treasurer's office, a lot that is not public safety. I think we need to really get into, make it a stripped, do nine-one-one only, and I think we need to save the rest of this stuff, we can probably do the infrastructure if we can pull that off, see the building's ready, but then delay all this other stuff to another time. I'm really concerned we're going to blow nine-one-one. Jim?
You know, we've had this discussion over and over, and I got to say that if we delay the other components of this bond issue, you are talking about paying for them out of general fund, property tax dollars. I will not support a property tax increase, these renovations are all justified and need to be done now, and if we have to label this a public safety and public property upgrade bond issue, so be it. I'm not on for a property tax increase, which is exactly what the stripped-down proposal will lead to, and I will oppose this bond issue if that's the case. You're taking nine-one-one out of what is, by comparison, a much more modern facility right now, albeit with a lot of downsides, and putting them into a building that you're not going to fully upgrade. That makes no sense, that makes absolutely no sense, it's not responsible, and we'll have to do it anyhow.
Oh, by God.
Dr. Foxall, let me just finish.
Sorry, I thought you were through.
Dr. Foxall presented to us this morning the fact that his census is at a several-year high, and it's not going down anytime soon, and he's got facilities that can't accommodate just the sheer waste product that the public safety pipeline puts in corrections. We want these people in corrections, we don't want a situation like the Nebraska correctional complex just had, where they don't even know how many people they have on their census. Nobody walks out of our facility, but it's at its limit, and if we don't upgrade these needed infrastructures there, the public safety pipeline has a big chokehold right at the end. That's not responsible, that will result in us doing it anyhow at the cost of the taxpayers' mill levy. I'm not going to do that, this is a bond issue that's responsible, the numbers need to be fine-tuned, and that's the purpose of this meeting. But to go back to square one from where we were at the end of the last meeting, when we had consensus on the forty-five million, and redo it over and over and over again, simply means that there are people that want the bond issue to pass, and there are people that don't. There are people that are in favor of the bond issue, and there are people that aren't. There's no cutting this baby in half at this point. After we've been on record and you can go back and have the, have the transcript of the last meeting, where we were all on record on this.
You're repeating yourself, let me make myself clear. First of all, I'm not talking about a tax increase at all, although this bond issue will increase taxes, is that correct, Joe?
It could.
It could, there you go, you're increasing property taxes.
It could.
It could, it will. The other thing is, what we just talked about was a fully upgrade in this building, and we need to remember, we don't control how this is going to come out. I will yield, and I will not say told you so, and I hope nobody says told you so, if it passes with all the Christmas tree on it, it's a very fatal political mistake. And I'm saying, do the nine-one-one and then come back a year later, when the building's all, we're spending all the money to redo the whole building to that nine-one-one issue, then come back and do the treasurer and all these other companies. But I am in the minority, so I will quit bringing that up, but I am, I am really concerned about it, so let's go ahead and, you know, let's put everything in it, to hell with it. I think we're, I think we're kissing our butts to buy, that's all I think. So, let's go ahead, anybody else have any comments about spending this, expanding this thing, or doing what we've got? Chris, do you have some comments?
Whatever the, I've made a public mind here, is that I think this is going to be ultra hard, we need to keep it to the core basics, but I'm going to just tell you, if the board decides another, I'm not going to go against it, so I'm calling a bluff, you're not going to go out and campaign against this bond issue. You mean, you're just not.
What, stripped-down bond issue? It's totally irresponsible, and we should hear it from the other stakeholders here before we throw them off the bus.
It's not irresponsible, I mean, right now, it is an issue of basically, you know, what you think they could stomach, and I think the news that we got today, I think there's great concern to think that stuff that made that, what made it seem irresponsible can be a poison pill for other people to get a hold of. So, I'm just saying, whatever the board is, I stress my deal on it, this is going to be extremely hard, extremely hard with the basis of it.
Mark, excuse me.
And it's a, it's a, it's going to be a tax increase anywhere it go, whether you want to, you know, you can put lipstick on a pig, it's going to be that. So, I mean, what are you going to call it or not, you're asking for the tax increase, the only thing is, is that we're not making the sole decision, so just wanted to...
Claire's in charge of putting lipstick on goats, we'll move on.
Oh, you're trying to get me to lose my train of thought, aren't you? Risk management, part of what is fiscally responsible is managing your risk, and as far as the correctional facilities and the repairs needed there, that's risk management to take care of the doors, the plumbing. Mark, you said our, Mark, you said our population fee is how large?
Thirteen oh six.
Thirteen oh six, and the capacity is?
Fourteen fifty-three.
And how many of those units have difficulties?
The old side, the old side, the annex, so I would say probably two-thirds.
Two-thirds, okay. So, we've got to do something, it's either now or later, all it takes is one lawsuit to lose a million dollars. So, risk management is an important part of the decisions we make. Okay, I just wanted, I just had a simple question I want people to think about when you look at the treasurer's office. Will it cost two million dollars to put the treasurer's office in the Fitzgerald Hall? No. Okay, you're going to save two million dollars in lease payments over a twenty-year period minimum, that's not even looking at the fact that we're not talking about an escalator clause, all we're talking about is the rent we pay to debt. If you look at the rent, we would pay over that period of time, especially if we got somewhere that's a better location for the citizens of Western Douglas County, it would be significantly more than two million dollars.
Okay, I surrender on all these things, I wish I hadn't bought it up. Let's see, are you done, Mark?
No, plus the utility savings, and if you factor in utilities and the fact that the cost of money that goes up two percent every year, you're probably talking four million dollars.
Right, and that, and that's not including the fact that the rent would go up as well.
But you have to provide food to everybody who drives out there, I'm just kidding.
Oxygen, oxygen, Mike.
I'm not an engineer, but I've worked in government buildings my entire career, most of my life, and I've occupied central police headquarters, the city-county building, when an HVAC system is piecemealed in and renovated, it never works, long range, you have problems with air handling, air ability, when you do a building, you've got to do it all, or you're going to have a long-term problem.
Yeah, I think that's where we, we're going to do that, so let's just go ahead, we're going to try to do it, put it that way. Chris?
You know, I just want to make the distinction that I don't think anybody's disagreeing with the case being made for cost, lease, whatever like that, but the realistic is, this is not lawful, aren't we? The people out there in western Nebraska already said, we, you're public, and that's a public safety issue, and if the stuff's not public safety, that is a threat to the deal. And in traditional days, yeah, you think public safety would carry a day, you could ride a coattail, and I agree with you on this now. If you're going to do, if everybody's hell-bent on, on that deal, then you make the two separate bonds and let them stand out there on their own. But the fact is, they've already proved, plus stuff, they are going to be against, and nobody's saying, I agree with the jail being in there that, there now, but I'm going to use this opportunity to reiterate, this is a maintenance thing for the jails, what it is. The argument of being made that's busting at the seams, you've got about seven, eight-hundred people in pre-trial, so if we're going to spend money on a building, you can spend money on the program to get them out. Any money spilled on a, to be spent on additional size, not maintenance, basically busts the budget for the year to come, because additional size means electricity, means staff and everything like that, so it hasn't come out, but my bet tells it always ceases, so anything outside of maintenance, the argument shouldn't be made that they're busting at the seams, you know, we get some people out of there at a whole lot more efficient rate than add, than bill, adding them to the building, not maintenance.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd make a comment, that the only thing I have real concern about is this eighteen and the work at the correction facility, because, and John Ewing, with all respect to the treasures or other things that are in here, nine-one-one and so on, I know the radios have to be fixed, but I'm really concerned that if we have some breakdown of corrections, where do the people go? We're going to have to be, and Mark, you may want to say something to it, but I really feel that's a priority, and if you say, and I'm the least interested in raising property taxes, that's one area where I'd raise them, because it's necessary to keep that place open and taking care of the safety of our people and the inmates. Mark, you tell me, over the past seven, past seven years, the population's been trending down, so Commissioner Roger's quite frequently doing a pretty good job of the program, plays a part of the security, push that, push off population, a sentence population was almost down, huh? Hundred and sixty, hundred and eighty people, operation maybe, twelve, eighty, thirteen, thirteen hundred. People can't believe it, one thousand, one thousand five hundred, they sent people, so I would put in a lot of focus, this is, this is a spike in the population, I think our population's been growing at the time, folks back every month, we're almost like a hundred ninety, about people on the floor, and that's part of the national trend, so I want to be able to house all of our people in place, and that's going to require that I have to open all, twenty-nine in my housing, but that does put more pressure on the housing, on the recent infrastructure. If I'm down a housing, I'm, I'm a big housing, sixty-four bed, minimum security housing, I'm done, I'm fourteen, I mean, you can't, we're thirteen oh six, and just because we have a thousand four hundred fifty-three beds, I don't have to get to a thousand four hundred fifty-three to be full, because of the way we classify, minimum, median, max, I could, if I get another fifty, I could be darned with four in a week, and then start to look, and then start to push down ice numbers, push down marshal numbers, take out our circle. Didn't you say you're the highest you've been in ten years or something? Yes, since oh, right now, since oh eight oh nine.
Pardon?
Since oh eight oh nine, we hit, in oh nine, we hit about thirteen thirty.
Okay.
We haven't been that high since, I'm close.
All right. Jim?
Joe, if we did this at forty-five million, what do we have to come up with each year to service forty-five million dollars worth of these bonds?
Well, we would structure it where I think the first few years, given our bond structure, maybe up to the first five years, we do interest only. So let's say forty-five million, average interest rate, the two percent, so that's nine hundred thousand, that would be the incremental amount to the budget for the first few years, I think.
Nine hundred thousand a year or every two years?
Nine hundred thousand a year.
Okay, thank you.
And then it'll increase in the third year probably, because you're doing interest only.
But by that time, I think our, that'll be winding down, so it will be offsetting, so we can play with it, because, you know, when we do this now, we're only down to about forty-six million dollars in total debt, so, you know, we've been paying off four or five million a year.
Okay, so, yeah, I see what you're saying, you won't be down in debt on the original bond we're doing now at forty-five, but your other bonds would be down.
Bonds will be rolling off, right.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, Joe, can you get a couple of years without paying principal on the new bonds?
Sure.
And still get that rate?
Yeah.
Okay, because we want to lock in our rate.
Because, you know, every, it's not one fixed rate, every bond is, you know, every year is a different rate, so, you know, if you don't, if you just do interest only for three years, you know, the way the yield curve is right now, it wouldn't be that bad.
The interest rate is the best we'll ever see.
Right, and it's locked in.
Jim?
Okay, so, I'm looking at what we've got near end, and nobody can spend any money now except you and purchasing until the new budget, the new fiscal year.
Next week.
Yeah, okay. That balance currently, that nobody can spend, that at the end of the, July first, will lapse back into our reserve, when I looked at it yesterday, was about seven million dollars, is that right?
That, what, what's...
That, that balance that nobody can spend, that has been unexpended to date, today, is about seven million dollars. You can spend it, purchasing can spend it, if it doesn't get spent by July first, it lapses into the reserve.
Yeah, but you got to offset that against the revenue, when I looked at it, it was, we were about flat at a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-one million in revenues and expenses, so we're coming in, my guess is it won't be seven million, it'll be more in the, not two, three million range, like we've been doing the past few years.
Double or triple what our bond payment would be, just if you made the comparison between the nine hundred thousand that you're saying... Double or triple what our bond payment would be, just if you made the comparison between the nine hundred thousand that you're saying it costs us, and what we're currently running at in a little bit of a surplus, which is a good thing. So, you know, and get back to the, you're gonna pay cash for a house if you don't do this bond, or you're gonna take out a mortgage at two percent interest and pay nine hundred thousand dollars a year for this bond. Forty-five million dollars cash for the house, or nine hundred thousand dollars a year for twenty years of two percent interest for the house, that's our decision here. We can do that without a tax increase, it's gonna cost tax money, but it's not gonna increase your property taxes.
Hey, Jim, you don't wanna say nine hundred thousand for twenty years, 'cause it will change when you start.
Well, it's nine hundred, so what's the top gonna be, Joe? Nine hundred to the range?
Well, let's, let's say, you know, if we amortize, uh, take, uh, the forty-five million, and you're amortizing it straight line over seventeen years, so what is that, that's like three, three to four million a year of principal repayment, but, you know, this year we're paying, uh, a little over four million in principal, so
what, what you're, what you're really trying to do is just, as your debt winds off, just replace it with principal repayments, so. I mean, right now, we're at, because we're kinda under-levered, we're, we have some flexibility to make it fairly manageable.
Thank you. Well, you know, I'm still concerned about, I think the expense on remodeling this building is still a lot higher than something else, but it's locked in, and I'm in the minority. But I do wanna ask a couple of questions, what are we, what are we moving emergency management for? We got a question, I'll come up on the microphone, can you tell us why?
If I could start and then you can add to it, there's issues with water, significant water damage we've had in the past that we will continue to have, there's odor issues, there's, um, issues having the park garage be above it. I do not like the fact that we have offices, we have the microphone apartment, and we have UFC down on that C level, which is basically a storage area, it shouldn't, should not have offices down there, our employees should not be down there, in my opinion. And I know that my predecessor felt the same way, but we've just never had the opportunity to move either one of them, and I see this as an opportunity to have a public safety-related department move out with other public safety departments, but.
And to add to that, um, this move would help us with the partners that we have in public safety that we deal with. And so, the efficiency and effectiveness of what we do would be enhanced just by being out there at that new location. Plus, the new location allows a lot more public access to us, and we, part of our mission is to interact with the public and develop our volunteer groups and everything else, as well as work with, uh, the county engineer out there. Uh, they're a big planning partner with us, as well as environmental services, sheriff's department, do with them continually, nine-one-one, it's just, it's just a unification that.
In an emergency, do you use the room downstairs, or is that gonna be turned into storage?
No, we use it down there.
So in other words, you rush from a hundred and fifty-six to Maple downstairs, is that it?
Well, the, the emergency operations center, uh, is important for us, especially, especially for weather events, but typically on weather events, we have, you know, it doesn't matter if it's two in the morning or whatever, we're at home, we keep abreast of the weather events, and so that we know if something's coming, we come down here, so.
The point is, though, that if you're out on a hundred and fifty-six to Maple, and something matters, you have to rush down to the center down in the basement.
We don't, we will be down here anyway, so we watch the weather, and so.
Hold on, just say, well, then you don't need the room, is that what you're saying?
No, we use the.
What do you use the room for?
The emergency operations center?
Uh-huh.
It does two things, the, the essential parts of the emergency operations center are information gathering, so we gather information from the field.
Yeah.
And, uh, resource procurement, so when incident command is out in the field, we get, and we find out, uh, you know, they, they express needs and wants from us for this, to get a hold of the state and the federal government, so we acquire those needs and those assets through the emergency operations center.
Okay, so I mean, isn't that why your office is there, aren't you, where are you, in down the hall from there, or what?
We're across the hall, but our offices are administratively, uh, you know, like I say, it doesn't, we're not a twenty-four-seven operation, so if it, it doesn't matter if we're at home or anywhere else, we have to get down at the emergency operations center, so we do that anyway.
Okay, I'll, I'll let it go, I just, I, I kinda saw you as a latecomer, and I wondered if it was kinda like getting on the bandwagon since we had a Christmas tree going, you know, but again, I'm, I'm wrong on this, I know, so. Um, I just, I just really think we're in, we're in trouble, so. Uh, I need to mention that the mayor is real cool on the whole bond issue, and what she has asked is that for Commissioner Morgan, me, and Commissioner Morgerson, because she's chair and we're finance, come up and see her. And I think if we go, well, never mind, that's a dead issue, but I think we're in trouble on it, I really do. So, thank you, and, uh, let's just move on. I guess what I'm, let's just go ahead and do that, I think it's, I can't believe this is happening, but, uh, let's just go ahead and present this thing as everybody else wants to, and, uh, we'll go for broke, okay? Any other questions or comments, if not, uh, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.